Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. It's the October sixteenth meeting. I'm sorry, July.
Let's start the recording.
Recording in progress.
October. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the July sixteenth meeting of the CCRPC. And first of all, are there any changes to the agenda?
None from staff.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the draft minutes of the June eighteenth Annual Board Meeting.
Move approval with changes. This is Jeff.
Second.
I'll second.
And Garrett, was that a second or was that a? Okay. Okay, moved by Jeff, seconded by Garrett. All those in favor?
Do we have any?
Aye.
Do we have? Sorry. Do we have changes?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Wait a minute, Catherine does not have changes?
Catherine does not have changes.
It was like a twelve-minute meeting, you know?
But still mark it down on the calendar.
Um. Uh, okay, any abstentions? Okay, so moved. And then into our public comment period on items not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public here that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, the Bolton Town Plan.
Hey folks, this is Taylor Newton. I'm the Planning Program Director here at CCRPC. I manage the land use side of the organization. Whereas Alani manages the transportation side of the organization. I'm here to talk to this agenda item. In your packet, agenda item four, you'll see a staff report and then a memo and then a staff report to our PAC, our Planning Advisory Committee, all recommending that the board regionally approve the 2025 Bolton Town Plan, confirm Bolton's planning process, and also grant an affirmative determination of energy compliance to the Bolton Town Plan. And so for those that are new to the board, what happens is that, or one of the things that RPCs do is we review municipal plans for con- uh, conformance with our plan, but also state statute. The body that does that is staff with the assistance, or really the direction of our Planning Advisory Committee, which is composed of all the municipal planning directors and planning commission chairs in the county. They meet once a month to review municipal plans and do some other business, uh, direct on policy. And so the PAC met back, I believe in May, to discuss this plan. And they have recommended that you do all those things. Approve the plan, uh, confirm the planning process, then grant an affirmative determination of energy compliance. Catherine, do you have questions?
Uh, I did not have a change in the minutes, but I do have a change on page nine in the Bolton Town Plan where it says enhanced energy review. It says the 2024 Jericho Town Plan.
Thank you for catching that. We don't have to change that, but I hear you. I can, I can, I can change the staff board if it's behind the scenes. It doesn't go anywhere. We are looking for approval of the resolution that is after the staff report. Chris?
I believe that Catherine is taking umbrage for Jericho's being included in there, but at the same time, I'm curious on the proposed motion here. Has Bolton adopted, uh, the, the plan?
They have adopted, locally adopted the plan. Yeah, we tried to set it up, Chris, where we, our PAC does their review before the local planning commission holds their hearing. So their RPC can get comments, the PAC can get comments to the local planning commission. Local planning commission holds their hearing, and select board holds their hearing, then select board adopts, and then it comes back to you as the board to grant regional approval.
Okay, so, um, will I make a motion that we approve and confirm with an affirmative determination of energy compliance when we approve their, confirm their plan?
I'll second that.
Please.
Do we need three separate, or is one for all three? One vote for all three, okay.
One vote for all three is okay to me, Garrett.
Okay, uh, sorry, moved by Chris, seconded by Catherine. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Okay, then we're on to item five, the Draft Committee Appointments.
Trying to walk and chew gum at the same time here. Um. So this is a memo on page twelve of your packet, um, but also I'm sharing it, so maybe you don't need to look at it. We typically do this in two meetings. So this is kind of the draft committee appointments. We talk about it this month, and then at September, uh, we'll, uh, ask the chair and the board to take action on this. There's two parts to this. Every two years, we need, the board needs to reappoint the regional board members. I have heard from all of them, except for one, uh, that they are willing to be reappointed. And, um. So that's the regional board members. And then were the committee appointments. Um, you can see them all listed in at least what I think is the current membership, which I always have something a little wrong. So I know staff gave me a couple of updates, um, after this went out. Finance Committee is typically, uh, the Secretary of Treasury, Karen. Thank you for stepping in tonight, Acting Chair. Jackie Murphy is the Vice Chair and Jeff Carr. The Board Development Committee has a chair, the past chair, Chris is now the Chair of this committee. Mike O'Brien, Jeff Carr, Andy Montrell, Karen Peterson, and Catherine, I know that you're interested in staying on, so that may be a conversation we can have tonight, or, or next month, or next meeting.
Yeah, I, you know, based on the rules, that I, you know, what happened to me, you know, it happened, it doesn't happen all the time, is I was a regular member of the committee forever, but then I became the immediate past chair, which opened up a slot for a regular person, and it was filled as appropriate, but now it's full. So if somebody else moves away, I'd like to be back on there because I'm so used to that. But I will have to think about another committee if, if it doesn't happen. And UPWP is always interesting because you give away money.
Yeah, so the UPWP Committee, um, is typically chaired by the Vice Chair, and then we have three to five board members. Ben, Andy, and Joe Segali are those board members now. Uh, but you can see highlighted yellow, there's, there are, there is a couple of vacancies there. They don't have to be filled, but there's opportunity there if someone's interested. The TAC, uh, Joe Segali agreed, uh, to be the rep from the board, uh, to the techni- the Transportation Advisory Committee. Um, and then you see the board also kind of appoints these interest group reps, which I think there's a change to one of these, right, Alani? Uh, well, we'll, we'll get that change for the next meeting.
Yep.
Planning Advisory Committee, Chris, I think you had volunteered for this a while ago and have been attending their meetings. Uh, Long Range Planning Committee, um, uh, Tracy from Essex, Karen, Dana from Charlotte Bend, Andy, Montrell, Aaron from Shelburne, and Paul Connor. Um, that group is kind of almost done. I think another two or three meetings before they're done with this cycle of plan update. Uh, so I'm hoping there's not too much change there, uh, in the next few weeks. Clean Water Advisory Committee, Bruce Wilson and Tom Eden. Uh, I know Bruce is interested in continuing. Brownfields, um, the board appoint, but there aren't really any board members on that committee. Hazard mitigation plan, Garrett, you, I think it's some time ago you volunteered to be part of that. Again, that's a, that's a group that meets every five years. Christine?
Thanks, Charlie. I saw in the Brownfields Committee, it looks like there's a slot specifically for the city of Winuski, and I wondered who used to fill that? Or if, um, there's some context on who might be the best for us to appoint.
I believe John Rasher.
Like the best person background, Rasher, yeah, okay.
I think John Rasher used to do it, Christine, but I mean, certainly if you want to volunteer, we would, we would take it.
Well, let me talk to him first.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure she was volunteering.
Yeah, I'm not there yet. Uh, no, okay, that's helpful. I'll talk to John and see if he will continue, or if we wanted to do somebody else.
Yeah, and that committee's probably going to be a little bit more, um, have some more on their plate in the next year or so. If you were at our board meeting maybe a couple of months ago, I mentioned that we got a million-dollar Brownfield revolving loan fund grant. Um, so they're gonna, they're gonna have some more work to do, uh, setting up that revolving loan fund, uh, and, uh, you know, implementing that. Sorry, where was I? Hazard mitigation, Garrett, you still good continuing there?
Um, once every five years is a lot to ask, but I'll manage it somehow.
Yeah, and it is coming, it is coming up. I think we'll start working on that next year, I hope.
Sorry, Dan, you'll have to deal with me again.
That was for Dan Albright, who I don't think is plugged in, but we'll make sure he hears that.
He knows it.
Basin Water Quality Council, um, yeah, thanks to Miles and Brad and Garrett serving on those different basins. Are, are you all three good continuing in those roles? Okay.
I kind of have to because I'm chair.
Excellent. And finally, there's a longer list here of community members that are on this Community Engagement Committee. We'll, uh, we'll talk to those members and see if there are any updates before your September meeting. And I guess I'll kind of scroll back up here. Um, any other thoughts? Anybody want to jump off of a committee or try to jump into one?
Charlie, I'd like to serve somewhere on a committee. I'm so sorry, my internet's going like in and out, so I didn't really hear everything, but I was interested in serving on one of the water committees, but if there's not like an opening there, I'd be open and stepping in wherever I'm needed. I'm not on a committee right now, so I was kind of like hoping to step into something.
Yeah, I, I think the opportunity seems to be really on the work program, you know, which is, uh, Catherine mentioned is, you know, where we kind of, uh, consider all the municipal requests and partner requests for funding and decide what, what money to give out. Yeah, so that's.
Yeah, I could serve on that board since there's two openings and, you know, we need someone.
Okay.
Uh, and, and Charlie, if, if nobody else is interested, I'll take the other, I'll, I'd be interested in learning about the other spot.
Oh, John, okay, great.
Super.
All right, um, Karen, I will get back up to the agenda for you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, okay, now on to fun topics, uh, number seven, staff introductions.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, we're number six.
I'm sorry. Oh, this is fun, too. Number six is the Ecos Plan and the Act 181 Update.
Uh, thank you, Karen. Uh, I will be providing the Act 181 update today. Uh, and so as I bring up my PowerPoint presentation, um, for new board members, I'll just, uh, give you a brief overview. I think the, the key thing to remember here is that we've been working on this regional plan update for four years. Uh, we are almost at the finish line. Uh, we delayed a few times. Uh, we, we first delayed because we felt like we hadn't really done adequate public outreach. Um, uh, especially in a time of staff transition where our, our previous planning program director Regina Mahoney was moving on Essex Junction. I was taking her role, so we, we delayed a year there. Uh, we delayed again last year because of the passage of Act 181, and that act required the Regional Planning Commission, uh, to develop a new regional future land use map, which you're going to hear a lot about tonight. Um, and we also needed, for the Home Act from 2023, we also needed to receive reg- or regional housing targets from the state and then create municipal housing targets from them. And so, uh, we are about to wrap up the maps and the targets, do one final review with our Long Range Planning Committee, but I will get into details in a second. Um. Most of you seeing this slide, I will not dwell on it, but just as a reminder, uh, the Regional Future Land Use Map is composed of eleven categories. Those categories are on this top line here, the downtown center to, uh, the, the rural conservation. These are the categories that we have to use per statute on our regional future land use map. Those areas that are generally planned for growth, the centers, the planned growth area in the village area are, uh, in line to receive benefits through two new state designation programs. The Center Program, which is for downtown centers and village centers, and the Neighborhood Program, which is for planned growth areas and village areas. Those two state designation programs, center and neighborhood, replace what previously was five, uh, five state designation programs. And then lastly, uh, down at the bottom, our land use categories on top translate to different levels of, of potential Act 250 exemptions. And so those areas planned for growth, those four categories that are pink, um, are eligible for what's called Tier 1B, which is partial exemption from Act 250. That's where, uh, uh, projects that involve fifty or fewer dwelling units, uh, could receive exemption from Act 250 jurisdiction, provided that the municipality opts in to be a tier one municipality, um, and only within those land use categories shown on the regional map. And then for Tier 1A, um, that's just the centers in the planned growth areas. Planned growth areas generally have water and sewer. I mean, that's full exemption from Act 250, and that's a separate process that will happen after the adoption of the regional plan, where municipalities on their own apply to the new state land use review board to receive that Tier 1A exemption. Before I talk about the work that we've been doing here at CCRPC, any folks need reminders on how this framework all works together, or have any questions? All right, I've, I've, I've just, I've just used this slide four or five times in a row, so you guys are all experts. Uh, I want to give you an update on what our Long Range Planning Committee has been doing over the past two months. And so, uh, our Long Range Planning Committee is already really working the plan that's been sitting on the shelf. They've been focusing on the map and on the targets the past year. And in the past two months, uh, they've been taking all the information we received during, uh, during, from our public engagement process that we held between, uh, really, really September 2024, but really focused between March 2025 and May 2025, and been taking that all in. And we, as staff, have been having that committee review, uh, revised future land use maps for each municipality. And so they've been going municipality by municipality, all nineteen, uh, in their three meetings in June and July. We really asked that committee to, to understand any remaining points of tension in municipalities about the map, and we've asked them to answer a couple of key questions, which you see here on the screen, which relate to whether or not our map really meets the statutory requirements of each category, and whether or not us as an RPC are being, are consistently using categories across the region, or if we are treating municipalities differently. Um, so they really focus there. I do want to note that, um, all of our, all of our municipal bodies, uh, on the first version of the map, uh, we received general consensus that our, our municipal bodies were okay with the map. Uh, we are making edits now. The two exceptions are Burlington. We're still working with the city council, uh, to make sure they're comfortable with the map. We held a work session on Monday. It went really well. We anticipate smooth sailing until September when they come to a, uh, hopefully a consensus, the map's okay, and then I'm, I'm meeting with St. George tomorrow. We know, we know they're pretty comfortable, but we're going to make sure. And so in terms of changes to the map between the version we released in, in March 2025 and the version that, uh, the LRPC is giving to you tonight, there are some regional changes, and then there's some municipal changes. I'm really going to focus on some miss, on the, excuse me, the regional changes, and talk about a, a couple of examples of municipal changes. Uh, first off, we heard during our public engagement process that, uh, parcels that are conserved, even if they're enrolled in the current use program, uh, we should consider those rural conservation and not rural ag and forestry. Um, people said that in almost every municipality, and so you're going to see a whole lot more dark green on the map in version two point oh. With, with conserve parcels in areas planned for growth, too. We also heard loud and clear, people want to see that as rural conservation. Uh, they don't want to see that as, as an area planned for growth. And so even in fingers of Burlington, you're going to see some rural conservation parcels, the inner veil, for example. Um, or larger parks where there's a really natural element. I think Luddy Park, for example, or, excuse me, Ethan Allen Park, for example. Lastly, uh, this is a change we, we made in, in concert with our RPCs across the state, is we took the flood plain river corridor and we made it an overlay um, and crosshatched it. And so you can see where those areas that are flood-prone are in the region on top of kind of the base categories that we're using. Um, and we've got like a tacit acknowledgement from the land use review board that will review our plan and approve our plan later, that that's okay. It's not strictly complying with statute, but that's okay. So we've all done it together. Uh, there is a, a summary of municipal map changes on the Ecos Engagement webpage. Uh, I posted that today, so feel free to go check in there. There are not that many. I'm going to talk about two in a second. In your packet, you'll also, also see a link to a new online map viewer that shows version two point oh of the map. Um, we've got a revised disclaimer on the map, talking about how the map, what its intent is and how it should be used, and that was in response to some comments that our exact committee and some members of the public had about our previous disclaimer language, that we've tried to make it clear. Um, we've also added descriptions of the land use categories on the left-hand side panel of the map to make it a little bit easier for folks using the map to understand what the categories are. We stole that idea from Northwest RPC to our north. Um, and then, as I said above, there is a, a list of map changes post LRPC review now on the webpage. That big purple area, the light purple you see in the middle of your screen, is one of the big changes we made, uh, or LRPC made, uh, this past week. And so what you see there is, uh, categorized as enterprise. It had been previously categorized as the, uh, the, instead of purple, it was, uh, the pink category, planned growth area, and this is the property of Redmond Road in Williston. And so it's the Global Foundries owned parcel, and then the Chitting Solid Waste District, and, uh, some assorted parcels owned by, you know, utilities like Belco. And so when checking for consistency about how we were using categories, uh, on the map and checking for if we were meeting statutory requirements, LRPC members called out this specific area is not conforming with statute, uh, strictly, um, because, uh, when it was classified as a, you know, a planned growth area, it really wasn't walkable to a center. It's pretty far away from the centers in Essex Junction and in Taff's Corners. Um, it's also an area that, uh, is pretty hard to get to, um, and is pretty restricted locally in terms of uses. It's mostly just industrial uses. And so they decided to change it, uh, from the planned growth area to the enterprise category. Uh, we coordinated that change with the town of Williston. The town of Williston is supportive of the change. They understand that we need to have a map that's in conformance to state statute to get to the LRB. Um, but it's a conversation that we, that we had with them. Uh, any, any questions on this change? That's, that's my urban slash suburban example. I, I've got another one here in Huntington, and Joe's here, so Joe can fill us in exactly what was happening here, but I'll try my best. Um, you'll see some, some orange, some brighter orange areas. Those are transition areas. And my understanding is in a previous iteration of the map, those areas were brown. They were world general. And they were changed to transition, uh, in version two point oh because those areas locally are designated in, in Huntington's neighborhood, uh, um, future land use category. Uh, folks in Huntington see them as a part of the village. They're intended for growth, but the reality is, uh, there's no utilities there. Um, and in terms of statutory definition, uh, our staff was feeling like we couldn't categorize that area as a village center. It was a little bit too remote. And so the, the compromise we've come to for those areas is to map them as transition areas that, um, that may be changing in, in the future, uh, perhaps to a more dense or more village-like form. Joe, did I get that generally right? Anything to add there?
I think Joe's here.
Joe's not here? I just assumed Joe was here, sorry. Okay, no one can correct me.
Oh, he's, he's out of town today. Sorry, this is me.
Thank you, Charlie. So that's what we did in Huntington, unless Joe tells you otherwise. Uh, so upcoming work with the Long Range Planning Committee in August and September. Uh, we'll continue to, uh, look at the future land use map as needed. Um, you know, if the board had any questions or concerns about the map tonight, I'd like to hear them, so we can let LRPC know in August. Um, if there's other things that they should be looking at, um, they will continue to look at Burlington and, and, you know, there are some other municipal map changes that we, that we made, or sorry, other regional future land use map changes that we made in some municipalities, and, uh, we may be hearing from those municipalities about those changes, and we may need to discuss them at, at future meetings. The other thing that, uh, the LRPC will be doing in August is, uh, looking at our environmental benefits and burdens analysis. I will try to summarize briefly on that point. Before, we were really looking at that analysis in terms of changes to our future land use map from our 2018 version to 2026. Um, we've actually really broadened our effort to look at the entire plan. Um, I think we're in good shape because of all the work we did back in 2023, doing engagement with underrepresented communities. But that analysis will be done late this month. LRPC will look at it in August, and it may result in some changes to the language in the Ecos Plan. I don't anticipate any map changes. We will see. Uh, from there, the LRPC will be looking at the full plan one last time. Um, I want to remind the board that the LRPC reviewed the entire plan back in fall 2023. They looked at the plan again, mostly focusing on formatting in, in May 2024. Um, and looked at the, the plan again in, in context of our engagement with underrepresented communities in fall 2024. So they're not rushed. They've seen this a lot, uh, as members can attest. And so they'll really be focusing on goals and actions and making sure that those are solid still. And then really focusing on language that's going to change in the land use and housing chapters, uh, to reflect the needed changes from the Home Act and from Act 181. I'm hoping that they complete their work in early September, and so, uh, we can move to you folks. And so today you're getting an overview on, on changes to the map. Um, but in September, I hope to do a full review of the Ecos Plan with, with all you folks. And again, focus on goals and actions because it's a giant document. Um, but making sure you're comfortable with that, making sure you're comfortable with the map. Hopefully, if that goes smoothly, um, maybe we need a little bit more time in October. We can complete or review the plan, and then staff will be seeking your recommendation to submit the plan to the state land use review board for, uh, pre-application review, which is a new process by which that state body has sixty days to review our plan and provide us with comments before we start our public hearing process, uh, next winter. Any questions or comments on schedule or what LRPC is doing the rest of the summer?
Okay, no questions or comments?
So hearing none, Karen, I just want to reiterate, you know, that, that, um, the, the map may change again. The, the board may make changes. And then I, I really want to reiterate that the long, or the, excuse me, the land use review board, after the pre-application process, they may come up with other things that we need to change in order to conform with state statute. And so this map's going to continue to be iterative, and so I really want to reinforce that with the board, like things aren't set in stone right now. Please let your municipalities know that, too. There, there, there may be changes forthcoming that we may or may not control as, as a board. Um, the housing targets themselves for the urban municipalities are four cities. For the rural municipalities, I don't foresee those change, changing at all. I think this provided the board feels comfortable. But if we do change the map, the mix of urban and rural municipalities, the Colchesters, the Willistons, the Shelburnes, Saperlin, or sorry, not Saperlin, Shelburnes, Willistons, Colchesters, Essex's of the world, the targets may change a little bit. I'm thinking in terms of tens, not hundreds. They should be about the same, but just know there might be some tweaking there, and we'll try to finalize those numbers later this fall. Yeah, with that, Karen, I'm, I am all set unless there are other questions from the board.
Okay, thank you so much, Taylor, and thanks to you and all the staff that have worked so hard on this. It's very impressive. Uh, now we're on to, uh, item number seven, staff introductions.
Sorry, charge. I've been having trouble with my muter all day. Should I just, should I just jump in or, yeah, go ahead. Um, uh, hi, everyone. I'm Christine Ford. I'm a transportation planner. Um, I joined the organization in nineteen ninety-eight, which is more years ago than I want to do the math on right now. Um, I joined when CCMPO and CCRPC were separate organizations. I was hired by CCMPO, Chitting County Metropolitan Planning Organization, to manage the Transportation Improvement Program and to manage what we called at the time the Project Development Program, which was the scoping studies and the feasibility studies. Um, there were five of us with, at the MPO at the time. Joe Segali was one of them, our Huntington rep. Um, so now three office moves and five executive directors later, I still manage the tip. I still work on scoping studies and feasibility studies. I do some contract administration work with the business office to help them out, and I coordinate the work that the. And I coordinate the work that the emergency management work that we do at CCRPC. Um, there's a stat, there's a team of us that work on emergency management. Um, and one of the things that I do, I staff the Regional Emergency Management Committee. I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with that committee, but um the REMC, another acronym that we have to have is created by state law. Um, the Public Safety Statute creates REMCs. Um, all of the regions have to have one. And um, they are made up of two representatives from each municipality. The Emergency Management Director is an automatic representative, and then the second is a representative of the public service community. It's appointed by the town. REMCs meet at least quarterly and the purpose is to kind of have a regional dialogue around emergency management and allow the communities to talk to each other and learn from each other. And we try to bring speakers and topics that will be of interest to the um community. So if you're interested in the REMC, uh, if you want to know who your representatives are, you want to come to a meeting, uh, shoot me an email and I can let you know. Um, so what else? I have a bachelor's degree in botany and environmental studies from the University of Vermont. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University and uh in New Jersey, and I worked for about 10 years for an engineering consulting firm in the New York City area where I did primarily environmental impact statements and environmental assessments for transportation projects, mainly highway projects, a few um transit station upgrades in New York City and some other random things. I did highway noise analysis for a number of years. That included the noise analysis for the Rutland Bypass, which we know was not constructed, but that was like the not early 90s, I think. Um, and moved to Vermont in 1998. I live in South Burlington with my husband and my cat and we like to, you know, enjoy the Vermont life. We do a lot of biking, hiking, canoeing, kayaking, floating, going to breweries, sitting on the deck, drinking wine, just a little bit of everything. So um, that's it. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Christine. And now on to Amy.
Thank you, Karen, for jumping in tonight. Sorry about that, but we appreciate it. And thanks, Christine. I really love your new summer doo. Very nice, cute haircut. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Amy Irvin-Whitlam, the Senior Business Manager at the CCRPC. And I joined the team in the business office six years ago, January of 2019. Prior to the CCRPC, I worked at um Vermont Student Assistance Corporation. Most people know that as VSAC, also located in Winuski. Um, I was there for 20 years where I uh led the training for the dispersment group, the origination group. And then I also worked on the William D. Ford Consolidation uh program for many years. Um, that was probably one of the largest um programs that the state of Vermont had in terms of um student lending. Um, so at the CCRPC, I actually have a wide range of responsibilities too. And in the business office, I support all functions related to finance, bookkeeping, accounting, um, HR support, I support staff and also um issues with facility, office issues. I work with Redstone for problems that arise or needs that arise. But uh, my main responsibility here is, and also my, I would say my priority, hopefully Charlie and Bruce agree that that's correct. My priority is to prepare the monthly Vtrans billing invoice. And that invoice is the single largest source of revenue that we have at the CCRPC. Um, my average monthly reimbursement amount is $345,000 and that's a little over $4 million a year um in, in money that comes in. Last June, I actually submitted the largest Vtrans invoice ever, and that was $575,000. So I'm currently working on this year's June invoice and I am curious to see if that's going to come in, you know, closer to the 600,000 mark um and top that $575,000 one last year. Um, in addition to those monthly Vtrans billings, I also balance all of our bank account statements. I send out the municipal dues reminder letters and then the follow-up with those dues invoices. I work all of our aging accounts to make sure that the invoices that we're sending out are getting paid. Um, over the years, I've developed various efficiencies at different processes. Many of those efficiencies and processes occurred um sort of on the fly out of necessity because COVID hit. Um, so we literally came up with processes overnight and a lot of those we're still using today. Um, we moved from being a very paper-centric organization to almost paperless. Um, even when things are hard copies, we end up scanning those and we now store everything um you know, on our server, on our computers, and we use a lot of um different uh technology options to have quick access to all of that. Um, and I also developed a lot of quality control measures um because I do work on the annual audit, which since I've been here and prior to me being here, but many, many years ago, I guess maybe they weren't always clean audits. But I feel like that's a big accomplishment, um, considering that we do undergo um the single audit. And that is um a scrutiny of the transportation program. It's a very strict, comprehensive review um that I feel pretty proud of actually, um, that I contribute to keeping those um on the up and up and clean. And basically that's it. That's what I do. I do the same thing every month um with my submissions and it's, it's a cyclical amount of work and I actually, I, I enjoy that. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Someone wanted to know uh what Tukey's name is.
Tukey. Oh, that's my mini Australian shepherd who's actually um on the large side. He's lazing here in the van. Coolness that's coming off from the fan.
What's his full name, aim?
It's Tuca Bob Rask and he is uh six years old.
Is he a hockey goalie?
He's named after.
He, he's named after Tuca Rask, yes.
That's great. All right. Well, thank you so much, Amy and Christine. We're very lucky to have you and uh thanks for, for laying us to get to know you a little bit better. Um, so now we're on to item eight, which is the semi-annual policy list review. Is this you, Charlie?
It is. Um, sorry, let me blow that up a little bit. Um, so yeah, for those of you that are newer to the board, um, every July and January, we kind of just review this list. Um, it's kind of been a little bit of the same list, I think, the last couple of cycles now. Um, and just kind of like what the topic area is, uh, how it relates to our uh regional plan, whether it was included in our work program, uh, which committee may have some role in it. And then there, this last column is just most, most of it is kind of like we're recommending a staff that we kind of monitor or participate in these conversations. Um, uh, so like this first one is just uh providing briefings to legislative committees about what RPCs do and um we do this as a statewide organization, association of RPCs. So it's not just about Chitting County RPC, but about all the RPCs, uh, because we're all generally doing the, you know, the same work. Um, Act 250 updates. Um, there was a big update in 2024, um, the Act 181 that Taylor just reviewed with you. Uh, I am expecting that there will be uh some uh effort to kind of clean it up a little bit. There were some inconsistencies as it went through that legislative process that uh resulted, that have caused a little bit of issues, not, nothing huge, but just clarification issues um that uh we'll be working on, or I hope nothing huge. Um, but just to highlight that um one significant issue that bubbled up is there's a little bit of disagreement between the regional planning section of statute and the designation section of statute. And if you remember Taylor's kind of Act 181 framework slide there, um, those, those aren't talking to each other perfectly. Um, so uh it has resulted in some challenges that I hope don't uh don't make the land use review board review process of our regional plan too challenging, but um heads up, it, it could. Uh, specifically, what the heck is he talking about? The, the real specific thing is around um historic centers and growth areas. Um, so in most of Vermont, it works pretty well to say, hey, we're going to have a growth area around the historic center. Works great in Burlington. Works great in Essex Junction. Works great in Winuski. And then, sorry, Chris, and then we get to South Burlington. And you know, where's the historic center of South Burlington? You know, it's called Burlington. Or uh, and not to pick on you, Kathy Ann, like where's the historic center of Colchester? It's called Winuski. Um, and so um there, there is that we are getting some questions about, you know, whether it's exactly conforming with statute, uh, what's on our map. So we'll see how that plays out. Sorry, didn't mean to go too much in a tangent to follow up Taylor, but um just on, on that particular one, it, that may turn into a bigger deal. We'll try to work to make it not turn into a bigger deal, but um, we don't control everything or everyone, so we'll see. Um, infrastructure and housing funding or financing uh this year was uh a big move with the CHIP provision of the housing bill. Um, I can't even remember what CHIP stands for, but Community Housing Investment Program, something like that. Um, so we'll, we'll continue monitoring what, what is happening there. The transportation bill, we always pay some attention to. Uh, transit financing is unfortunately not a new topic. Um, you know, GMT, I think we'll still be talking to the legislature. We've been providing some support there. Um, climate change, we'll see if there's any policy changes there. Uh, resiliency and emergency management. Um, I don't know how much more work the legislature will do on this, but there is work that the legislature assigned A and R uh and maybe VEM in this area. So we'll uh kind of monitor that. Um, and then a regional and municipal governance. Two years ago, the legislature um adopted or charged themselves really with doing kind of a study committee of the government operations committees to I think they called it a regional and county governance study. That I expect to pick back up uh sometime in the next month or two. And in theory, they are supposed to have recommendations to the legislature by the end of the calendar year. Um, as soon as I hear anything uh interesting about that work, I will I will, you know, we may, we may talk about that work some more this fall if there's some recommendations coming out of the committee uh that you should be aware of. Um, and then uh this year, there's also another study effort going on and some of you may, you probably got surveys from uh UVM on municipal technical assistance. Uh, so they are providing, uh, they're doing research right now, talking to a lot of people and providing recommendations back to the legislature. I'm not sure what those will look like, but stay tuned on that. We'll also uh try to brief you on what that is. Um, so, so this is just kind of the list of, at this point, nine major topics. Are there other topic areas or things that anybody else is aware of um that are happening in the legislature? You know, we're in the middle of a biennium. Uh, so bills that got introduced in 25 that didn't get acted upon still continue into 26. Um, but I'm not aware of any off the top of my head. Any feedback, thoughts?
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I got there. All right.
Okay. Thank you very much, Charlie. Okay, now on to uh item nine, outreach and engagement update.
Yeah, so this is page, uh, the last page in your packet. Uh, for those of you that are new, uh, this is really kind of focused on the Community Engagement Advisory Committee. Um, but also uh what uh if you haven't met Anne Nelson's daughter, who's our, our reaching engagement manager. Uh, this is also things that she's working on. Um, she did just have a baby, uh, I think in February. Uh, so she just returned to work uh on June 30th. Um, although at a little bit reduced uh amount of time, so she's working 30 hours a week now instead of 40. Um, and she, you can see her priorities that she's listing out here. Um, and right, the immediate focus is going, again, going back to what Taylor referenced, a focus on the environmental benefits and burdens work that we need to do as part of the regional plan. Um, the next uh kind of priority. Um, there's also, you, and some of you may remember months ago, there was some interest in some of the municipalities about having an equity policy advisor uh to kind of work more internally with the towns. Both Winuski and Essex Junction budgeted some money in their FY26 budgets. Um, and uh, we're kind of in conversation with them and Alison in particular is, is talking with those two uh cities to see um if they'd like to buy some of her time to help them do some of that work. Um, so that is a conversation. I think they're meeting next week, so um I don't have any detail to report on what it is, other than there's a conversation that's starting. And then uh the last bullet under her priorities there is the uh public participation plan, which is a, a federal transportation requirement. Um, and there's uh, we need, it's been, geez, Emma, when was the last time that was updated? 2013?
2014, I believe, yeah.
2014. All right. I was a bad guesser. Uh, 2014. Um, yeah, um, so we are looking at updating that, but in particular, you know, we've been doing a lot more work with community uh members and community organizations. Uh, and we've had an interim stipend policy for quite a while. Uh, we'll look at updating that and also language access. Uh, you know, when are we going to use translators um and things like that? What documents are we going to try to translate? Um, so those are a couple of the pieces that you might see first uh before the full public participation plan gets updated. Um, and um, you can see the SEEK uh update, you know, we really kind of focus more on the regional plan at the last meeting. Um, I think they're going to be focused on the regional plan again at their next meeting at the end of this month. Um, and again, uh, more details on the public participation plan, but yeah, any questions I can take? Uh, Anne Nelson's out of town. I expect she'll probably be at your next meeting if you haven't met her yet. Uh, in person in September, Jeff. And yeah, that's um, that's all I've got, Adam Chair.
Okay, super. Thank you, Charlie. And on to the uh item 10, chair and executive director updates.
How uh? I, I have no pressure on you. You don't have to have an update. Um, so uh one thing, um, I, I guess I'll talk about the other first is um the bylaws was mentioned in the training session we had just before the board meeting. We have been working on an update to the bylaws. Um, thanks to the Board Development Committee. Uh, it's in the, at the executive committee table now. Um, it is going through one, what I hope is one last attorney review. Um, and so I'm waiting to hear back from the attorney, but um that should be on your agenda. Um, and Catherine, as you were mentioning uh some time to go through the bylaws, uh, we may, we may have that chance uh coming up in September, October. Um, I am a little concerned with how much is on the September, October a potential agenda. Um, so um if we get in person and feed you pizza or whatever it is, um, we may have a longer meeting in September, so heads up um on that. Um, item A is ACATMA, which is the Chitting Area Transportation Management Association. Um, and uh the Transportation Research Center at UVM. Uh, two different conversations, but um CATMA, we're uh going to have some conversation about um you know, if the relationship between CATMA and the RPC should change at all, uh, maybe even potentially, you know, uh might it become a program of the RPC? So uh, we're just going to explore that and, you know, come back certainly to the executive committee and to the board uh with where that conversation may go. Um, and the Transportation Research Center, I don't And the Transportation Research Center, I don't think we have anybody on here for Vtrans. Their large grant, they had a large federal grant that supported the Transportation Research Center. There was a cooperative partnership grant with two or three other universities. That just recently got pulled by the federal administration. And so I think we'll end up having some conversation with Vtrans and to see again if there may be, something may change in the relationship with the TRC or the level of support to the TRC. The last few years, they've been asking maybe for like one one project a year. I don't know if that might change now that they don't have as much federal funding flowing into that effort. And feel free to ask any questions here as I go along. Although I don't have a lot of answers at this point, this is more of a heads up. And federal, the other part of the federal funding picture, we haven't had any many direct impacts really of any grants that have gotten pulled for us. I mean, certainly there are other impacts happening in our communities that you are all reading about in the media, but so far, knock on wood, we've been okay. Yeah, happy to take any questions or or thoughts about things we should talk about next time. Or not.
Okay. All right, thank you again, Charlie. And then item 11 is committee liaison activities and reports. The links are there to all the various materials and minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments about those? Okay, and now do we have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I will make such a motion with compliments to your leadership this evening. Thank you very much, Karen.
Second it.
Thank you, Benjamin.
By Chris, seconded by Benjamin and all those in favor to adjourn.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Take care, everyone.